Welcome. This is the Monday, April 11, 2016, meeting of the Board of Selectmen. This meeting is being recorded. Is there anybody in the audience recording this meeting as well? Okay, I don't see anybody, so may we all stand and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have a little bit of a busy night here tonight. We have no public comments for tonight. We don't have any public hearings or presentations tonight, and no communications. Under the Board of Selectmen, general items, I have the seasonal open-air license on town property, Boy Scout Troop 53 Flower Sale at the Auburn Fire Station, May 6 through May 8 on 2016, and we have the documents enclosed with the chief's comments and approval to use the fire station. The representatives of the scout troop.
Hi, my name is David Keyes. I'm the scout master for Troop 53 in Auburn, and as you can see, I brought some boys with me tonight. These are young leaders in my troop, and they're learning citizenship in the community, and also here to help me with the flower sale. So basically, what we're going to be doing is we're going to be doing our annual flower sale, Mother's Day weekend, and we'd like to hold it at the fire station like we have in the past. We'll set up on the side, and we've got safety precautions set up planned for that, and hopefully we can get the permit fee waived as part of the process. So we're nonprofit, of course, and we're looking to save our money to go to summer camp, and we'd also like to go to Washington, D.C. next year with the money, so that would be very helpful.
That'd be awesome. Mr. Keyes, I know you have some of your scout troop here tonight. I'd like them to come forward and just introduce themselves.
Great, come on up, guys.
I'm Josh Anderson, and I'm a Star Scout.
I'm Sam Elwell. I'm a first-class scout.
I'm Cameron Ganong. I'm a Life Scout.
I'm Harrison Ganong. I'm a first-class scout.
Welcome, and a pleasure to meet you. You've got an interesting night tonight. We have the evaluation of the town manager, and it's over the past year's performance. We have a few other odds and ends. We've got a few licenses to be issued, and a couple of proclamations also. So there, you will see a little bit tonight, and you're welcome to stay as long as you like. Okay, now, is there any comments on this open-air permit? Mrs. Goodrich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just for the record, I'll note that the liability waiver has been included in our packet and a letter, an email from Chief Coleman allowing the sale and requests that they set up in the municipal lot adjacent to the station.
Okay. Is there anything else? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Yes, Mrs. Brotherton.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the license, provided that all the applicable requirements of the state in town in any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all of the conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. And we have another motion on the waive the fee?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to waive the fee in accordance with the board's policy.
A second.
Okay, motion been made, a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. And good luck with your project.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next we have on the agenda is the town manager's evaluation. I'll just go through a little bit of the process. The letter we submitted to the town manager is as follows, and it was dated on March 31, 2016. It says, "Dear Julie," and it came from me, the chairman of the board. "Dear Julie, I am pleased to provide you with a summary of your evaluation by the Board of Selectmen. As you know, board members were to submit their completed evaluations with any written comments to me so that I could meet with the vice chair and prepare a summary, cumulative scores, and a final overall score. I met with the vice chairman, Goodrich, on March 28, 2016, to develop a summary of the evaluations, and board members included some level of written comment, whether on the evaluation form or a separate written summary. Again, I'd like to acknowledge and thank you for the level of depth and detail in your self-evaluation. The addition of the three reports was especially useful and will become part of the record. This certainly was of assistance to me, and I would assume all board members in completing the evaluation. The evaluation was based on the approved evaluation form and three additional town manager goals. The average Board of Selectmen score for the evaluation form ranged from 3.6 to a perfect 5, and ranged from a 3.3 to a perfect 5 for the three goals. Individual selectmen scores range from a low of 3.6 to a high of a perfect 5.0. Julie, I'm pleased to share with you an overall performance review of a 4.5. I would like to schedule the public evaluation for April 11, 2016 meeting, if that's agreeable with you. I am sure I speak for the entire board when saying I look forward to this meeting so all members can publicly acknowledge your hard work and dedication. Congratulations on your excellent review, and thank you for your dedication to the town of Auburn. I look forward to working with you as we continue moving in a positive direction for the entire town. In best regards, Kenneth Holstrom, Chairman." Okay. What I'd like to do is I'd like to open it up to committee members, and if they have any comments, to bring them forward at this time. And Mrs. Brotherton, I'd like to start with you.
Good evening. Good evening, Town Manager. Couple of comments I'd like to share. I have had the pleasure of working with Ms. Jacobson for just about five years now. As each year has passed, she has gotten stronger for our town. After two years of working on a municipal aggregation, the town's community choice was approved from the State Department of Public Utilities and Department of Energy so that the town was then able to implement its own program. The middle school was completed on time and below budget. The reuse advisory committee was initiated by residents and board members to explore our possibilities for our two vacant elementary schools, which met on a regular basis to bring our findings back to Ms. Jacobson, where she would then meet with the committee and offer any suggestions, excuse me, and to answer all and any questions that we may have had, and we did have many. We have continued to remain fiscally sound as she continues to find ways today in every way to use our monies wisely. She has worked feverishly along with so many to help the board invest, digest, and question the self-hold land that we all work through. She remained open to suggestions. She listened to the board's concerns, along with many residents' concerns, and yet never appeared frustrated as we did have many questions. These are just a few of Julie's accomplishments over the past year. There were many more. I gave Julie a score of five with one exception, and that one exception, apologize for the notes here, was on budget and finance. Under budget and finance was number one, to prepare and present the annual budget and capital outlay for the program. I gave Ms. Jacobson a four, as not to remiss CFO Kastenovich's involvement with that project. Julie goes out of her way to keep the Board of Selectmen informed of all issues. She keeps the board up to date with significant projects that her administration is working on, and keeping us informed, that allows her to keep the public informed also. Her response to direction from the board is distinguished. Her feedback to questions from the board has no flaws. She knows our town chatter like the back of her hand and can very quickly refer to the MGLs in any given case. Ms. Jacobson is professional, involved, and serves our town with such commitment and an unsurpassed work ethic. I look forward to working with your leadership for the upcoming year, Ms. Jacobson, respectfully.
Thank you, Mrs. Brotherton. It's unfortunate that we have two members here tonight that are not here, Mr. Carpenter and Mr. Simonian, and I'm sure they would have had some comments at some point, but we will follow along, and, yes. And this is Sharon, what is this you've given me tonight?
Yep.
Okay, pass that along.
I'm not going to read it now because I'm next to my comments.
All right, yep. And that's, this is a comment by Mr. Simonian. Okay, I haven't had a chance to review that, so I'll review that. So, Mrs. Goodrich, go ahead.
Thank you so much. And thank you all for being here again. It's wonderful to see everyone here in support of the town manager's evaluation. I know many of you were here last year in support, and I appreciate your being here tonight. Having said that, after careful reflection on a banner year for the town of Auburn, and after thoughtful consideration of each component of our formal evaluation, I have decided to rate the town manager's performance over the past year as distinguished in all applicable categories. This is not something I approach lightly. As a selectman and as a resident, I have the highest standards for those given the honor to play leadership or managerial roles within our community. But after a great deal of thought, I must say I truly feel that the town manager has done an exemplary job above and beyond what is required of the position in a way that has made a real, positive, and noticeable impact on the quality of life here in Auburn for our residents. Though I continue to offer constructive suggestions and feedback throughout the year, as I evaluate the manager's performance this evening, I am pleased to have so many positive achievements to highlight. Moving through the categories of our evaluation procedure in order, relationship with the Board of Selectmen. An area that impacts us as selectmen is our own working relationship with the manager, and in turn, the manager's relationship with this board as the executive of the town. As I have in past years, I found Ms. Jacobson to be professional, polite, responsive, inclusive, helpful, and engaging as the town manager in her dealings with me and with the board, though not hesitant to be clear, direct, and firm when the situation calls for it. Throughout the year, I have brought residents' concerns to the town manager, which she has taken the time to investigate, address, and respond to in a courteous and, I'm guessing it says professional, manner that exemplifies the respect she shows not only to the members of this board, but also to our broader community. Under town administration. In this area of town administration, Ms. Jacobson continues to distinguish herself. Her achievements in this field include the interdiction general's approval of the town's new omnibus general and administrative bylaws after over three years of determined focus and thoughtful leadership on that process. The research, drafting, and guidance of the proposed thorough, through the bylaw review committee and this board are reflections of skilled management that resulted in the achievement of long-term goals. The town's successful assumption of the management responsibilities of the golf course and the beginning of the needed work on the facility also reflect Ms. Jacobson's strong management. This was a touchy subject that required a skilled hand to navigate effectively, and in my opinion thus far achieved the best possible outcome. I must also note that within this category, that in my elected and professional capacity, I attend Mass Municipal Association events throughout the year, and the reputation of the town of Auburn, and the reputation the town of Auburn has earned because of Ms. Jacobson's professionalism is extraordinary. Our town manager is highly respected around the Commonwealth and is widely sought after for her advice and guidance by other municipal leaders. Under the category of budget and finance, of course, the highlights of the manager's performance in this category, in addition to a source of pride for our town that will have a real impact in terms of reducing borrowing costs in the near future, is the town's bond rating upgrade to an AA2 received from Moody's Investor Services. This achievement is a major component of why I've chosen to give such a high mark to the manager's performance in this category, and it reflects the successful execution of a careful, long-term plan. This achievement is also a reflection of the manager's excellent working relationship with our town CFO, which is in keeping with the spirit of cooperation and collaboration she has fostered throughout town management, by, throughout town government by example. In addition, Ms. Jacobson's leadership has resulted in the town's increased, increasing its reserves, as well as addressing pension and healthcare liabilities. She has also been diligent in ensuring that the town applies for grant funding for which we may qualify, and has achieved a notable rate of success. The total value of grants awarded since 2011 through December of last year is $2,376,821. Of that amount, five were regional awards totaling $768,675. Under community relations. The highlight of the manager's work under the community relations category was the creation of the Coordinated Calendar of Events, so that residents may access through one portal all of the relevant happenings in the community. The new Town of Auburn Coordinated Calendar of Activities includes programming at the Auburn Public Library, Lurin-Glick-Nordbrand Senior Center, as well as Recreation and Culture Department offerings. As I reflected on this category, which is critical for what is town government if not responsive to the needs and concerns of citizens, I thought on the various communications I received from residents throughout the year, be they comment in person or otherwise. I find it striking that each and every piece of feedback I have received from residents in the past year has been positive, which upon reflection is quite stunning. It is rare in municipal government that positive feedback even outweighs negative feedback, which is a simple reflection of our human tendency to comment mostly on what needs to be fixed. But the opinions expressed to me of our town manager this year have been universally positive. So in closing, finally, it is worth noting that each of the specific goals that the Board of Selectmen had established for five, for year five of the town manager's contract, to initiate the process to update the town master plan, to initiate the zoning bylaw review committee, and to rejuvenate the open space committee to undertake the analysis of the recommendations for the use of the town-owned property, we can check as completed. Ms. Jacobson is constantly setting new goals, pushing herself to achieve them, never someone to rest on her laurels. She is skillful and adeptly anticipating the next challenges that Auburn will have to tackle, and getting right down to work, inspiring our whole team of municipal employees right behind her. Returning to the overwhelming positive nature of the feedback I've received from residents this year on the manager's performance, this is what, in addition to achieving the goals set forth by her, by this board and effectively managing the affairs of the town government, has led me to give the manager the highest rating available. It is so encouraging to hear residents excited and enthusiastic about the direction that our community is taking under the manager's leadership. It is clear to me that what is emanating from the manager is more than just hard work. It's a positive, can-do attitude that is permeating throughout the town. In Ms. Jacobson, we have more than a manager, we have a leader, and only a true leader can inspire a community in quite the way she has. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie, the town manager's evaluation process that we have undertaken has been detailed and comprehensive. The town charter revised in 2009 clearly defines both the town manager's responsibilities and the role of the Board of Selectmen, and as town officials, we are committed to its understanding and implementation, which is the key to success of Auburn. Mrs. Jacobson works well with the board, and she remains open to new ideas and strategies, to directions and suggestions by board members, whether informal or by board vote, and is always willing to discuss alternative methods and options to achieve our common goals. She continues to provide detailed information to the board regarding major issues affecting the town, which includes emergency weather conditions, grant activity, new initiatives, and significant issues in the administration. I've lived in Auburn all my life and have participated in many facets of Auburn's government, thus I have a good understanding of the operations. As I approach the end of my fourth year on the Board of Selectmen, I believe that the services and programs that our town provides to its residents and businesses is the best of any community in Massachusetts, and that is because we have one of the finest town managers in the state. As town manager, Mrs. Jacobson has put together a dynamic team of professionals, and they in turn have hired and appointed successful and qualified individuals to carry out the day-to-day operations in their respective departments, and many of you are here tonight, and I thank you. A sincere thanks goes out to all those who make up Julie's team, from department heads to the employees. Without the coordinated efforts of all the employees, Auburn could not succeed. Mrs. Jacobson clearly loves the town of Auburn and has its best interests well-protected. She has a great knowledge of Mass General laws, insurance programs, and their benefits, and labor laws. The town charter, bylaws, votes of town meeting, and of the Board of Selectmen are reviewed and referenced on a regular basis and implemented as required. She has a keen business sense in how it can directly relate and/or affect Auburn. Because of her vast experience, Auburn is the envy of the communities of Central Mass and beyond. She actively participates in Mass Municipal Association as the executive board. This membership alone provides insight and reference to upcoming legislation and associated information that could directly affect Auburn. Julie has a regular contact with our state and federal legislators, information, assistance that they have provided his research, and acts upon proactively assuring the best outcome for Auburn. Her participation and association with many local and regional organizations, such as the Chamber of Commerce, Business Roundtable, Economic Development Committee, Central Mass Regional Planning Commission, the Worcester Regional Tourism and Visitors Corporation, Central Massachusetts Regional Homeland Security Council, just to name a few, gives her a broad sense of business, community, economy, and security that provides her team, the Finance Committee, and the Board of Selectmen with well-researched information to make decisions that will benefit us all. She has significantly reduced our legal expenses in 2015 by 63.54 percent, and between 2011 and 2015, she has reduced them 51.90 percent. Her research and application of grants has resulted in grant awards totaling $2,376,821. These monies have afforded Auburn services and materials that would have otherwise been funded through the operating budget. Working in concert with our CFO, Ed Kastenovitz, the town manager has implemented sound fiscal policies supported by the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen, which in 2015 resulted in Auburn's upgraded bond rating. This allowed the town to realize significant debt service savings and will benefit the town for many years to come. Our fiscal condition remains stable, free cash has increased, excess levy capacity has increased, and reserve levels have also increased. The Facilities Division of the DPW has completed many significant improvements to the town facilities. Their work is able to significantly reduce outside labor costs, allowing materials to be purchased to complete those projects, and that department was part of her organization planned for the town of Auburn. The goals of the town manager, as set by the Board of Selectmen, have been met. Goal one, to initiate the process to update the town's master plan, has been completed by appointing the committee and to research funding for this critical project. A timeline has been set to keep this project active and on time. Goal number two, to initiate a zoning bylaw committee and create a timeline, has also been completed. Prior to establishing these committees, Julie researched other communities, met with planning consultants, and met with the Central Mass Regional Planning Committee to determine the best course of action to take on the master plan update and the comprehensive zoning bylaw review process. Both of these tasks will be extremely time-consuming and require dedication, commitment, and extensive time by members of the committees and town administration. And goal number three, to rejuvenate the open space committee to undertake the analysis of and recommendation for the use of town-owned property. The first focus of that review will be to focus on our recently acquired property on South Old Road. The committee has been appointed, excuse me, and their charge has been set. I would be remiss if I did not thank all the volunteers of boards, commissions, and the committees for their time and their effort. Your commitment and participation in the operation of our local government are vital to the town's success. Thank you to you all. As chairman of the Board of Selectmen, it's my honor and privilege to recognize Mrs. Jacobson for her unwavering dedication to the town and congratulate her on another successful year as town manager. Respectfully submitted, and thank you. Ms. Jacobson, would you please?
Thank you all, all of you. It's hard to always know where to start. This is such a humbling process, and those of you who have to sit up here and go through this know that it's not easy, first of all, to take the compliments, which are much, much appreciated, but also I want to make sure that I share them because it is not me, this may be my evaluation, but this truly is an evaluation of all the employees in this town. And all of us together collectively work hard every day in a number of different areas, as the three of you have thankfully and gratefully pointed out. We have a tremendous team. So I want to thank you for your support of me, as well as for all the employees that are here this evening, as well as those that, you know, just work every day, day in and day out, to get their jobs done and do a great job. So I'd like to first of all just say that I am honored to be town manager here in Auburn. I say that every year, but it continues to be true, finishing my fifth year. I'm very fortunate to work here, and I'm fortunate to have a great Board of Selectmen to work with on a variety of policies, issues, and initiatives that we take on every year on behalf of the residents and the businesses of this community. And I think, given your support and the hard work and dedication of all the employees, we're able to ensure a high quality of services are delivered to our residents every day, day in and day out. It's been, it's difficult. The board every year sets annual goals for me to achieve, and as you have said, and I want to point out too, it's not just me achieving those goals. Each of those goals is then incorporated into the relevant department, the department head, and employees to work to achieve those goals throughout the year. So we're all pulling on the same page, we're all heading in the same direction. So I'm very proud, continue to be proud of the strong team that we've developed, many of whom are here tonight, from department heads and division heads to management team in every department and employees across all departments. While I'm the one that sits before you for this process every year, it certainly is a reflection on all of us. So when I'm giving good scores from you, I'm proud because I know that means that all of us have done our jobs collectively together, and we do have a great team. You've mentioned some of the things that were achieved, but I think it's important to just mention a couple of the things that happened in 2015, because it does reflect on the employees and the hard work of the department heads and some of our boards and commissions to get there. So I just wanted to mention a few things, and forgive me if it's repetitive, but we did receive a bond rating upgrade from Moody's Investor Service, which was a culmination of five, six years of a multi-year financial strategy, and it will save the taxpayers of this community money by lowering our borrowing costs, and it also provides us the ability to borrow to provide the equipment and services that we need to conduct our operations every day. The multi-year general bylaw review process was also completed, as you mentioned, and again, that was almost a four-year process, culminating with the Attorney General's approval in October. So we're very proud of that process, and we thank town meeting, certainly the committee for all their work, and all the department heads who worked on that over that time. Also mentioned, another highlight was the municipal aggregation program. That, again, was an initiative that we started a couple of years ago, and it did take some time to get it in place, but now that it's in place, it's proving to be beneficial to anyone who was a participant in that. The rates that we were able to get for residents and businesses are 27 percent lower than they would have had had we just stayed on the National Grid Plan. So I want to thank everyone who worked on that. Everybody is benefiting from their participation in that kind of program. Other highlights and things that I'm proud of and happy to be involved in is now Discover Central Massachusetts, which is a new tourism council to try to encourage economic development and bring businesses here to Auburn, and again, encourage the use of our restaurants, our hotels, and our entertainment industry here. I've also continued to advocate for legislation that benefits the town and not shy to speak out against legislation that won't benefit the town. I think it's important that we continue to watch the state legislation as well as federal legislation to make sure that we're on top of it. Also, very proud to continue to serve on the Central Mass Homeland Security Council and to be able to receive and go after grant funds to support public safety initiatives and get some equipment. While a lot of that equipment is regional, we're very fortunate that if we're the applicant and we get approved for it, that equipment is stored here. So we have So we have access to it very quickly. It is available to everyone in the region, but we certainly are grateful for that kind of equipment. And as you pointed out, had we not been able to get that equipment, it would have ended up being on the CIP list, and some of it actually already was on the CIP list, and we were able to take it off and save the taxpayers dollars and still provide the services that we need. We also are undergoing, through DPW, the implementation of the Facility Improvement Plan, which is great. We've been able to identify some funding to get things done in individual buildings and offices. It's important to keep our town buildings in good condition. It's important for the employees. It's an important thing for the town to make sure that we preserve our assets. So we are continuing to do that through DPW. As you mentioned, we were able to meet all three of the goals established by the Board this year, and I want to thank the Master Plan Committee for getting underway and the Zoning Bylaw Review Committee, and also thank them for their future work that we all know will be coming down, down the road. It's probably a three-year process for each one of them based on past experience. So that is a very huge commitment that everybody needs to make moving forward, and we really have some great residents on that committee, and we have a lot of employees who are going to be involved in it. We were able to secure designation through the state and signed by the Lieutenant Governor, Karen Pulito, this year, a community compact, and that ties right into the goals because one of the goals was to research potential funding sources for the master plan. And through that, we were able to secure two state grants for a housing plan and an economic development plan, which will offset any costs that the town may have had. And lastly, the goal for the Open Space Committee, to take a look at parcels and provide input to the Board and to town administration on what to do with town-owned parcels. They've done a great job in conjunction with our town planner and town administration and continue to work with them. I really appreciate the time that you took to provide comments and feedback, and I want to thank you for your support and your guidance. Again, I'll say it again, a public evaluation is a very humbling process, and I do take the process very seriously, and I take your comments very seriously, and I'm committed to addressing any issues or concerns that the Board may have. Also want to point out that if there is a business or a resident that a Board member comes in contact with over the course of the year that feels that they didn't receive responsive, timely response from me or any of our departments, or still have concerns, please bring it to my attention as soon as that happens so I and our team can address it rather than letting it wait. It's important that we know these things right away. I continue and will continue to work hard to foster a good relationship with the Board of Selectmen. Again, I think I'm fortunate to have a good relationship with you. And I'll continue to be proactive, to keep you informed. I know you probably get more emails from me than you ever care to, as do most people. And I've really made an effort this year to stop the emails that go out after midnight. If you notice, I've calmed down on that. Don't quite send out quite as many. I send them to myself, and then I launch them all in the morning, which is when you get them. Moving forward, I'm going to continue to strive to meet the goals that you give. I respect every member's opinion. If I was given a three by a couple of members, you know, to me, yes, that's satisfactory, but I strive to be far more than just satisfactory in average. And I think all of us are far more than average and satisfactory. I think as a team, we're a five, and I would tell you, we're a ten. This is a great team, and this town is very, very lucky to have the employees here and to have the services and programs that we're able to provide to those employees. So I'm very pleased with the overall score, 4.5. I'm thrilled. I thank each of you for your assessment and your input. And before I end, I just want to, while I can't thank every employee, it's important to recognize, first of all, those of you who are here tonight, want to thank you for taking the time. Some of you are on duty and appreciate you coming in while you're on duty, and those of you who aren't, I appreciate you staying late at night. Mondays are long enough without staying late on Monday night, so I thank you. I want to thank Ed Kaczynowicz, our Assistant Town Manager and CFO, who just does a tremendous job every day, true asset to the town, and I think we make great partners in all things that happen here, operations and financially. Fire Chief Steve Coleman, who's here, and all of his team. He just does a tremendous job. The DPW Director and Town Engineer, Bill Coyle, and his team is just phenomenal, continues to just amaze us with what you can accomplish. The Police Chief, Andrew Slukas, and his entire team that's here tonight. Can't say enough about the leadership and the direction that you, as public safety officers, give to this community. Darlene Coyle, who's the Director of Development Inspection Services, does a tremendous job in all of her team as well, and Mike Moreno, who's our Director of IT, keeping us, keeping us virus-free, keeping us, keeping our emails functioning, and keeping this, everything ticking. We need to have that. And also want to thank and recognize the department heads, and I know I'm not going to get them all, but those who I see, and some of whom I don't, but I know sent their wishes. Matt Benoit, Wayne Boomequist, Amy Contoy, Larry Corbin, Cindy Cosgrove, Eileen Alexander, Deb Dubois, Ken Fairbanks, Chris Hugo, Eric Lesbrunz, Jean Collins, Jeff Mitchell, Caleb Moody, Mary Ann Murphy, Mignon Murray, Kristen Pappas, Mary Oliver, Joanna Paquin, Deb Terry, and Cheryl Westerman. And I apologize if I left anybody out, but I appreciate what you do every single day, day in and day out throughout the whole year, and you make my job certainly easy and actually enjoyable. So I want to make sure I thank the command staff at both the Fire Department and the Police Department for everything that you do. You're consummate professionals, and the service that you provide to this community is top-notch. And I want to make sure that I thank the clerical support in my office. While Patsy, retired from our office, is still part-time, I want to make sure I thank Patsy Biergard, Sue Struzina, and Sharon Kwiatkowski, and our newest addition, Shannon Regan, who give us support every single day for all of the different things that come before us. And lastly, just to thank the Board and Commission members who serve this community. It's a challenge to get Board and Commission members who have the time and the energy and the willingness to serve on committees, and many of them serve on more than one committee. So I'm grateful that they've stepped up and taken on some of the roles that need to be done. It helps all of us at town administration to have a good, strong, solid boards. So I want to thank you for a very professional evaluation process. I much appreciate it. I'm honored to continue to serve this community, and I look forward to working with you on your coming here. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Thank you very much. And again, thank you to all of you being here tonight. I know you've taken a lot of time out to be here tonight, but it's definitely well worthwhile to see how our evaluation of our Town Manager has progressed over the course of the year, and as you can see, we've done very, very well in it. Thank you to you, Julie Jacobson, and thank you to your team for all that you've done. I do have some comments here. I do have a note here that came in from, as an email, to Ms. Kwiatkowski. It's from Mrs. Simonian, and I'll make these available. I will not put them into the record tonight. Unfortunately, he's not here, but it's an email that came in, and I will leave them here for anybody who wants to review them for after the meeting. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a motion to have a five-minute, a couple-minute recess so we can thank the people here?
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Thank you. I can't sit in this one because...
Oh, you can't?
No, because it's too...
Thank you.
I like my little corner. I have it for a few more weeks before you guys push me out today. Okay. We are back to the meeting at hand, and now we have the Town Meeting Warrant in front of us, and it's the Annual Town Meeting Warrant to Town Members. We want to vote on that, to send that tonight. I know we did have one question last meeting on Article 16, and I'll turn that over to Ms. Jacobson to tell us about that.
Through the chair, thank you. Yes, we met this morning with Town Council Bob Henigan and the moderator, and we also then had a follow-up conversation with the School Superintendent. So as you can see in the package, I believe, was this handed?
Is it, they have this now?
No. Okay, we're going to hand out to you, but this article is going to be sponsored by the Superintendent of Schools, based on a conversation and recommendation of the moderator and Town Council. But just to be clear, this is, the dollars that would come out, assuming a town meeting vote, would not be appropriated from the school budget. And I think that, that's why this was just a little, thank you.
Thank you.
Just, we wanted to make sure that we handled this appropriately. So while it is, it's related to a student, so therefore it is a school item. It's not an Auburn school item because now the student will be leaving Auburn. But because it's affiliated with schools, it was the opinion of the moderator and Town Council that made the most sense to put under the superintendent. So the superintendent, we had a conversation with her this evening, and she has agreed to do that. She will be notifying the school committee. It's not coming under the school committee only because they already had their meeting to look at and vote on their warrant articles. So without their vote, she, rightly so, would have been uncomfortable to put them on here. So she's sponsoring it.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Okay, then what I'll do is I'll entertain a vote to send the May 3, 2016 Annual Town Meeting Warrant to the Town Meeting Members. Is there a, Mr. Carpenter?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we send the warrant to Town Meeting Members.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion was made and seconded, to send the warrant to the Town Meeting Members. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move up agenda item. I'm not sure which of them Mr. Mitchell is here for.
Okay.
It's already a late enough hour.
Right, I think the one...
Which item are you here for?
Drain.
Drain license, that's our next to know.
Oh, okay, thanks, okay.
And so what we have is a drain layer license from Mitchell Associates Construction Incorporated of Shrewsbury, and not to be confused with our, with Jeff Mitchell. Includes the application for the construction company and a previous licensed drain layer within the previous five years. And the application has been recommended by the Sewer Superintendent. Any questions? Being none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the drain layer license to Mitchell Associates Construction Incorporated of Shrewsbury, Mass, provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all of the conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void.
Okay, the motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Jeff.
Thanks, Jeff.
Next, we have the vote on the annual license renewals and the second-hand junk licenses, and this is enclosed the list of the annual renewals for second- and this is enclosed the list of the annual renewals for secondhand junk licenses that will expire on April 30 of 2016. The DCG, including the Police Chief, has reviewed them and expressed no objections to the renewals, and they are as follows. Adams Estate Jewelry at 871 Southford Street in Auburn. Hanush Jewelers Incorporated, 385 Southford Street, Auburn, in the mall. GameStop, 385 Southford Street, Auburn, in the mall. And Best Buy Mobile, 385 Southford Street, Auburn, in the mall. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we approve the license renewals provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it. To comply with any and all conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void.
Okay, motion been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you. Okay, now we have gift acceptances. One to the DPW Recreation Department from Polar Beverages for $2,500 for the Summer Concert Series. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we accept this donation with gratitude and ask that a letter be drafted for the chair's signature to Polar, expressing our profound thanks for their generosity.
Second.
Okay, motion been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Sharon, have you got that?
Yep.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you. Proclamations. We have a couple here tonight. I know that we're in the process of developing a policy for that, but we will go through these tonight. Again, request for the annual proclamation for the National Letter Carriers Food Drive, and that comes from Mr. Norman LaFlash, as he comes every year. And what is the wish of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request for the proclamation for the annual Letter Carriers Food Drive Day on May 14, 2016.
Second.
Okay, motion been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you. Okay, now we have a request for proclamation for the Auburn Fast Pitch Girls Softball League for its 40th anniversary on April 23, 2016. What is the wish of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we approve the request for proclamation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, the motion been made and seconded for the Auburn Fast Pitch Girls Softball League 40th anniversary. Is there any discussion? Being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you. Now, to the town manager items. We have a couple here in front of us, a 2016-17 HMEP grant for $1,127, and I will turn that over to Ms. Jacobson.
Through the chair, thank you very much. Both of these grants were, we just received notification on them fairly recently. One of them actually has a meeting coming up this Thursday with the state to discuss the grant and what's eligible and the expenditures under it, because they do come from FEMA funds, and under the federal government, as you recall from your Emergency Management Director days, there are certain restrictions on the use of the funds. So the grants aren't due until after this evening's meeting, but I didn't want to lose the opportunity to get your vote to allow us to go forward and apply for it once we meet with the state on Thursday and kind of develop the parameters of the program. I'll tell you that 99.9 percent chance we'll be going forward and doing the training program. Given the dollar amount and what the requirements are for this grant, generally we've used it for training, which has been great. So it's a matter of what type of training program are we going to be developing and what are we going to be putting in for. So it would be the same thing on the next one now. The first grant, the 2017 HMEP grant for $1,127, it's strictly related to hazmat planning. So it is very restrictive as to what you can do, so that's why the training works out well. We had a training with it about eight months ago, and I believe we're going to be repeating that type of training. So that would be the first one, $1,127. If you want to take that one first.
I'm sorry, the HMEP is the Hazardous Materials Emergency Plan?
Yes. Yeah, it's the Hazardous Materials Emergency Preparedness Planning Grant, yes.
Okay, thank you. Just so that people know what the HMEP is, thank you.
And if you want the second one, and then you can vote on them. The second one is the same hazardous materials. It's for the prior fiscal year's funds from the state. Basically, it's for remaining unexpendable balances that the state has under that grant round, so this is a competitive planning grant. We did receive a grant under that that we used for training, and the prior two years we actually applied for iPads for use of the Emergency Management Director, the Police Chief, the Fire Chief, and myself hazmat. So that type of equipment, we really seem to be good on. So it really is more training, and in some cases, working not just with the Fire Department but potentially with the Police Department, and it could also be cert. The meeting on this Thursday will be attended by Mark Moss, who is our Emergency Management Director, and following that meeting, we'll make a determination how to proceed.
Terrific, thank you. Well, I'll take these individually. So under 6A, this is for the Hazardous Materials Grant for $1,127. Is there a motion?
Chairman, I'll make a motion that we vote to authorize and accept grant funds for the 2016-17 HMEP grant for $1,127.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you. And for the HMEP grant from 2015-16, is there a motion?
Chairman, I'll make a motion that we vote to authorize and accept grant funds for the 2015 through 2016 HMEP grant, competitive planning grant.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion been made and seconded. Is there anything further discussion? All those in favor? Aye? Opposed? Thank you. We have no tabled items in front of us tonight, and Board of Selectmen member items, and I'll turn that over to Mr. Carpenter. He's requesting a proclamation from Mr. Jim Buregard, recipient of the Thomas S. Green Public Service Award. Mr. Carpenter.
Yes, I know. I was reticent to do it because I know there's been back and forth and disagreement or differences of opinion among board members, but I thought that when Mr. Buregard had been singled out not just by the manager but by his own department for such a prestigious award, I thought it would be appropriate for the board to, let's say, jump on board after he's already received this very prestigious award and just express our thanks for all of the attributes that he demonstrated that had the manager and Mr. Coyle wax so poetically about him. So I think he's certainly very deserving for all the reasons that were expressed that the manager gave us at the last meeting and followed up by Mr. Coyle. So I would ask that we do that. Obviously, it's entirely up to the board. I understand that, as I said, that it's something that we have a disagreement over, but I didn't want to miss the opportunity to at least...
Okay.
Didn't want to be too timid.
That's in the form of a motion.
It would be a motion that we issue a proclamation to James Buregard of our town employee.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Goodrich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll support this request and say that Ms. Brotherton and I will be meeting shortly to bring back the final draft and hope that the board will vote on a policy at our next meeting.
Okay. So the motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you. We have no public comments. If there's nothing else, we have minutes from October 13, 2015, December 14, 2015, December 28, 2015, January 11, 2016, and January 25, 2016. Is there any errors, corrections, comments?
Mr. Chairman, I didn't get to go through them all, but I'm sure other members did, so if no one noticed any admissions or errors, I'm happy to accept it.
Okay, well, then we will accept them as presented. And Sharon, thank you very much for your time, your energy, and again, it's very, very detailed minutes for all of our meetings, and it does spell out exactly what has happened throughout all of them, and I thank you very, very much for that. If there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you and good night.